Mary looking into, she had suggested that she would be able to provide us with the, with the name of the collection agency that the DuPage County Court System uses. And we would certainly be bringing that information to you at a, at a future date if, when it becomes available. Alderman Wesley?
Okay, I can open this up to questions. Kristin Weir?
In the secondary memo presented to us that the fee for the, taking the top 10 to court, I wasn't clear, is it $150 to $250 for the grouping of 10? Or is it per case? So we'd be looking at $2,500?
Well, the cost, as she had mentioned in her memo, the costs of the suit are collectible. The cost for filing the individual cases should be in the range of $150 to $250. I assume that to mean that particular case with those 10 fines in it, not individually. Wouldn't make sense for us to want to, to take 10 cases at $250 if we're only going to be collecting $500. That, that makes no sense. So I'm almost positive what she's talking about is bringing those 10 cases under one case title and it costing a maximum of $250.
Okay. If that's what's being discussed, then I would support something like that because then it's efficient and it's not, you know, overspending on something that you're spending dollars to chase pennies or whatever that saying is.
Well, her and I had talked on the phone at length about this and, and she's aware of the fact that certainly we want to get the most bang for our dollar as possible. And we're somewhat shy in wanting to have to pay the high attorney's fees at times.
Why can't we collect the outstanding fines if, it's like a court, right? If I go to court and I don't pay the fine, don't I go to jail?
Presently, under the administrative adjudication procedure, we have, we have no punitive relief with respect to these individuals. Basically, because it's not a qualified or quantified court system per se, there is no way of being able to do that under the state statute. That's why we have these other avenues open to us.
Can I continue?
Yes.
All right, I'm looking at, you said 40, we used to get like 40 cents on a dollar or whatever, 40 percent. So on, let's say a $20,000 number, we're looking at $8,000 collected if we go through the way we used to do it. The way we do it now, we would collect $13,600, which is basically 70 percent more. But if we start wasting a lot of time and effort on paperwork and chasing money down, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make nothing.
Well-
It doesn't become worth it.
All right. Well, currently, we're, we're breaking even. And if, if we can, my suggestion would be to go along with the city attorney's request to have a test case done so that we, we can see how effective this can be at collecting these monies. And I think it's at least worth, worth a try.
Go ahead, you have one more?
Personally, I mean, I don't mind doing the test case and going forward, but if, if we're basically not gonna do any more and all we're doing is creating more work for staff and whatnot, you know, being in business, we're not in business to break even like you just said. Sooner or later, you're gonna lose money and it's gonna start costing us money. I, I think staff's got better things to do than to start chasing down these fines.
Mr. Lewitin?
Question, clarification. Are all these 72 cases homeowner, homeowner cases, is this what they call a C case? You know, where you, you write the citations, there's like a C in front of it or a V to indicate it's non-vehicle? Who wants to answer that?
If that was, my understanding, if it was in the Edison Court, that would be the case.
But you are correct, this is, would be like a local ordinance citation, yes. It's a citation that we have created ourselves. It's not a, a DuPage County citation that they are issued that is a City of Wooddale citation.
What do they call those? There's a letter in front of them.
It's a-
A C, it's a-
OV.
OB?
OV, ordinance violation.
OV, okay, thank you. So all of these are, are what we call, we call OV, ordinance violations?
Yeah.
So all of them are property owners? They're all against the property owner? Then I would dis-
Or business.
Huh?
Or businesses.
Or businesses. Okay, so then I would disagree with you that there's no punitive relief because there's land attachment. That's the punitive relief. And we can wait till they, they sell. I mean, it, it's almost a no-brainer. It's very cheap to file a, what do you call it?
Lean.
Lean. A property lien against the person and collect it when they sell. It might be five years, 10 years, might be two months. But the thing, cumulatively, they'll eventually all start to break in at the same time. So that five years from today, over a four-year period of assigning, land attachments, property liens, all of a sudden, you'll start kicking in a year's worth of them at one, at one time. So if we're breaking even, you know, using your analogy, you're breaking even, if there's no expense involved, how much is it to do a, a property lien?
Twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars. So everybody can be leaned and when they sell the property, we'll get it from the sale of the property. It'll be a disbursement. And you're talking $12. But well, one thing I want to say to, to Alderman Police, Alderman Nunzio Police, is that the purpose of this is not tax revenue that, or punitive revenue. That's secondary. The primary purpose is, is compliance with city regulations. So even if we lost money, but we had a more beautiful town, it would be worth the expense. So here, we're getting income for enforcing what everybody wants enforced. And if you want to rebut, you know, rebuttal that, I, I accept your time to hear it.
Let me get a few more questions here, then we'll, we'll discuss that. Mayor, you have a question?
Yeah, on the collection of the outstanding fines, why can't we just simply withhold city services? Specifically, either the business license or water? Can't do the water, can't do water- Why not? Health and safety regulations. We certainly shut it off for non-payment. What's the difference? It's a valid debt to the city regardless.
I, I don't believe that we'd be allowed to do that. That's something we can definitely look into, but I don't believe that that, oh, Mr. Bond-
I thought Mr. Johnson just said that, I mean, sorry, I wanna-
Let the mayor finish his question, Sam.
That we have to be home rule to do that. So we're, we're short people to do that.
Sam.
Sorry to interfere.
To my knowledge, we, I think we need to talk to the attorney about, to my knowledge, it's not a home rule, non-home rule issue. I mean, if we can shut it off for non-payment of the water bill, you can shut off for non-payment of a fine, I would think, but, or at least withhold the business license if it's a business until it gets paid. What are the liquor control violations the hearing officer is hearing? It's in the paragraph here, I was curious.
We have no knowledge of the liquor control violation hearings. That could be most, possibly of the police department.
Unless it's like an underage drinking ticket or something of that nature you're administrating? And the last thing is, my understanding, the hearing officer was $600 per hearing?
No, Mayor, the hearing officer costs $750 per session.
How long is, are his sessions? How long are these hearings lasting normally?
They can last anywhere from a half hour to-
We have a two-hour slot.
Yeah, two hours, a little bit maybe more, but that, that's, that's the extent of it.
You might be able to get a little better deal than that?
Well, we had also talked to the city attorney about that with respect to us thinking that this was kinda high-priced. Because when this was first talked about back in the, last winter, last early spring, let's say, we had been told that most likely the adjudicator's charge was going to be $550. And we had been going along with that. And then it wound up, by the time we got to, starting our adjudication portion, it got to $750.
Is the city prosecutor also an attorney?
The city prosecutor, yes.
And he's putting in the same time as the judge, I presume, so I think we might be paying a little too high on an administrative hearing officer.
Well, that's something we're also looking into and we, I had discussed that with, with the city attorney. And we're looking to hopefully get that, that amount reduced because I don't know if we're getting the-
Value for services?
Exactly.
Mr. Sharkey?
Okay, I've heard that we're looking into another hearing officer. I've heard that we're looking into a lawsuit that would take 10 of these at a time. Just two points. I've heard talk about, well, it's taking up staff time. I think it, does it take up less staff time to do it here than it does to go to Wheaton?
When we go to Edison? We go to Edison-
Edison? Is there any difference?
The staff time that's involved is keeping track of the stuff. That would, that does take more time than if we were to go to Edison.
If it goes to Edison, or if it does, if we do it, is the staff time about the same or one is more than the other?
Yeah.
Which one is more?
More staff time probably this way, a little bit.
Little bit? Okay, and I see-
The police would handle it, the records, the other way, but, I mean, we have more firm control of things here and you know what's going on. And like Roger alluded to, things are faster. You know, where if I write a ticket for somebody tomorrow, it might not happen, I might not see that person in court till January. Then say they don't show up, maybe then I'll see them in May. I mean, it's crazy. It gets really long where this is, you know, along their route.
So this is a lot quicker?
Oh, much quicker.
Okay. And we're getting back at least what we're putting into it. So we're getting $6,500 and our expenses is $6,400. And we haven't had to touch the $15,000 budgeted.
Correct.
So I'd say give it another six months and go along with these other ideas and see what it looks like at the end of the total 12-month period.
Mr. Caddell?
I got a few things I want to ask. First of all, I heard something about through Edison, we were collecting on average 40 cents on the dollar?
My understanding, it was 62 percent approximately. On $75, we get $47. I don't know, I've never seen that, this money yet. I've never seen it, I've seen these figures, I've never seen them.
Okay, does that mean that, what was the number, 70? Two? All right. Does that mean that we won 62 percent of the cases and we can always collect? Or not?
Yeah, we didn't, I don't believe it, but I think things work a lot differently there.
Well, here's where, here's where I'm going with this. I, cause, because I agree with Alderman Lewitin that the, the whole point of this is, is not about making money till at least hopefully break even, but, but it's about code enforcement. And, and I understood from staff and conversations we've had that a lot of times when, when you were going to Edison, it was, you know, there was, as in any court case, there's, there's gonna be some flexibility or, you know, there's gonna be some, gee, I wonder how we're gonna do based on how the judge is feeling today. If there was a case just before, a property maintenance issue that was of a more serious nature, the judge may be prone to, to dismiss and say, no, this is not a big enough deal, let it go. In which case, we might not get the property maintained properly or the word kinda gets spread around that, oh, you can beat this stuff. So what I think our, our first and primary focus needs to be is, you know, enforcement. So if, if you can prove, you know, to us, since, cause I want to give this test another six months, if you can prove to us that you're doing better on enforcement and that you're at least still breaking even, I think I want to go forward with this. Plus the possibility of, you know, of, of collecting money through, you know, this method that, that our attorneys have mentioned, we might be able to get more than we are now anyway. But I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna stand firm on the fact that it's about enforcement. Thank you.
Mr. Newzio?
I didn't say stop, stop enforcing the codes. Need to keep doing that. I mean, we don't want junk piling up in the, in the yards. That's, that's not what I was getting at. My thing is, if we're wasting a lot of time and we're not, you know, basically not making anything, we're losing money. Now, now you, you brought up 60 percent. Are, are we getting 60 percent back from Edison or 40 percent? Cause if we're getting 60 percent, that's, that would be $12,000 on 20, on 20,000.
Right. If they're fined that way, they're not, it doesn't work that way in Edison. You don't get that kind of a fine, fine coming out. Like I said, it could be months and months and months and, yeah, maybe $50. You know, you're gonna get, I'll go in there in January and have Judge Judy, and I'll go back in March and I'll have Judge Jake. I mean, it'll be different judges. It's just, it's completely random stuff. There's no, there's no continuity to it. The 67, 67 percent, or 62 percent is what I was told by the attorney today, that that's what he believed it was prior when we used to do that. But again, I've never seen that, I've never seen any, there's no way if these cases were brought in Edison that there'd be this kind of a figure. It wouldn't ever occur.
The other thing I'd like to say is, the mayor is right. If it's a business who's, who's in code, against the code of some garbage cans or disaster, whatever, his business license should, should be able to be revoked or water bill or something. We should be able to tack it on somewhere. I think the mayor is right.
I've never had proper business complying. They generally comply.
Okay. Any other questions before I ask my questions? All right, I have a couple of questions. Why this really concerns me is there's $13,600 out of, of not being paid. My question here is, there's been a time already that we had this man here and no one showed up for a hearing and we paid this guy $750. I have no problem extending this program another six months. The only reason why I brought this up is I wanted to see the update on it. Concern I really have on this program is if a person doesn't show up, and did you, did you call the adjudicating guy and ask him, if he don't show up, how much of a fine does he go up, his step procedure? Did I ask you to?
Yeah, there is no specific fine structure. Though someone that doesn't show up will be fined more. And someone that we have more of a hard time getting compliance from will be fined more. Somebody comes in after having a citation written and they comply, they're fined maybe less. There is no specific fine structure.
Okay. But my other question in, on that, after they get fined and they don't show up, who sends a letter to them and saying, this is the money you owe? Is it our attorney or is it the adjudicating guy?
It would be the attorney.
Our attorney, Pat Bond?
Mr. Valmonte, I believe, prosecutor.
Will it be more leaning for us to send it through the city attorney to collect the money instead of him? All right. My, 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 my really concern about is collecting the money. I mean, there's, there's a problem there. There's a major problem collecting the money. I don't believe in liens. I really don't. And I don't know about anyone else, leaning property don't do anything. We have leaned so many properties in this city so far on water bills and everything else. You know what? The people don't sell their house and a person passes away because they don't sell their house, all that money goes into probate. And, and us to get our money, it ain't happening. I guarantee it ain't happening. So leaning properties don't make sense to me. I would sooner put a hefty fine and if they don't pay it, then you're right. Newzio is absolutely right. Then the guy, there's a warrant out for the guy's arrest. Bottom line. It's just like a ticket. If you don't pay five tickets of driving a vehicle, you get arrested. It's the same thing with everything. I don't see why we can't do that. I understand the home rule, we can't do on the water bill, but again, I think the, the mayor does have a point that maybe we need to look at as our attorney about cutting off the water if we have to. Cut the city services. Or, or like these guys said, yank the business license. If we start yanking business license and they are businesses, they're gonna have to come in, they can't operate their business. Okay? That is my concern. I have no problem extending this for another six months. Other questions? Mayor?
Just to clarify, this is a civil proceeding and there is not, the hearing officer does not have the authority to arrest people. Fine only.
There's gotta be a legal attorney, you can look at it, the way we can get the money then. Al Moshark?
May I make a motion to suggest or recommend to full counsel that we give this program another six months and go through these other processes to see if we can increase the collected fines?
Roger?
I just wanted to make mention that as soon as staff becomes aware of the proceedings and how we're processing this and whether we're making any progress, we will certainly bring another report back before counsel.
Mr. Johnson?
I visited several municipalities in regards to their adjudication programs and not, not a single one of them, every single one of them, I should say, said that they're not doing the adjudication to make money, that they're fully intended on losing money, that that's not what it's about. They know they're gonna lose money, they don't care. It's, they're here for compliance, they want to get the things done.
Mr. Newzio?
So if, basically what we're saying is, if I don't feel like cleaning my yard and you give me a citation, well, I don't care, cause I'm not gonna pay you anyways. So what are you, what are we saying here?
Yeah, we had that with the Edison system too. I mean-
I mean, we need to be able to enforce the code somehow and not just, you know, hey, so why you give me a ticket?
Can you ask if there's a second to my motion? Second?
I'll make the second.
Go ahead, Mr. Coles.
How many, on this, on this $13,600, how many repeat offenders?
That's a good question. Probably, I don't have exact numbers, but I would say maybe, there's probably three or four people that are-
Repeat, repeated?
Yeah. Now, I've taken, from what I was told by attorney, I have started to write those individuals' citations for Edison to get them into a, a system so we could-
Different type of system?
Yes, sir.
To have the-
Yes, sir.
Get warrants after them.
Yeah, these are people that did not follow through, still have not followed through and I'm getting no complaints at all. Other people here that are in these fine structures, compliance has been done. These are just fines that they still had. I mean, majority of things get done, they're still getting fined. Which again, other adjudicators will come in and tell you that if someone does comply, that they won't fine them. It'll be a zero and, okay, you're done. Which I don't agree with that because by the time I give them a fine, by the time I give them a citation, I've put in several weeks, maybe months of work trying to get them, to get what they got done and they didn't do it. Then they get a citation, all of a sudden miraculously gets cleaned up. So I do believe they need to be fined and they're not paying, but majority of stuff does get done.
Because, one reason why is because he's gave me notices, he's gave me notices on certain people two or three times and I, you know, and I say, gee, why can't we do anything? You know, I mean, there comes a note that you gave me one a month ago, a month and a half ago. And I just was curious how many were repeated.
And the mayor had one today that he brought up to me, it's just been ongoing. And you could, you could bring the president, it ain't gonna make no difference. You're not gonna do it. I mean, just the way it is.
Thank you, that's all I, I got.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item to consider, future meeting, six months revenue review of expenditure, special meeting December 4th. And the meal and wheel program will be discussed again to see if we're going, allow more funding to that for this year. Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thanks.
I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of November 13, 2008. Will the minute taker please reflect? The same members are present. I make a motion to approve minutes dated from the special meeting October 30, 2008.
So move.
Second.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, for, for items one through seven, I'm going to make a request that we go through the motions here and if you do have specific questions regarding these issues that you raised them at city council next week, that our, our lead person, Mr. Graff, has a family emergency, he's not able to be with us. So he's the one that would answer a specific question on this and we will give him that chance to do that at city council.
Why can't we just do this all at city council then? I mean, if, if you're gonna make the vote today and there's questions, I mean-
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Graff has some personal reasons why he can't be here. So my suggestion would be, the report and recommendations on items four through sevens are just simple pay requests, the committee pass those, and then at council, you ask any questions from the, from the city engineer. And then item eight, the stormwater ordinance that we just tabled to future committee.
Aye.
Okay, well, I still do understand that we need to get these to the next level and if we decide to vote on them in the negative, then we would do it at council or, yeah, yeah. So that's true, either way, it's gonna go to council, I believe.
I, well, then we're gonna have to, then I would do one item at a time then because the problem is, when the mayor sits on his boss' agenda, we're just gonna say, approve this. But I have questions.
Okay, well then, as we go through, do you just want to state your questions and then Jeff can take them down and bring them to Mr. Graff? We, we don't have his expertise here tonight, Mr. Murmas.
No, I mean, I think all we're gonna do tonight is, we're gonna follow our simple procedure for item four, report and recommendation. We're gonna request approval, one at a time, each item. That item then goes to council and then at the council, you'll have to vote for final approval and at that time, you can ask-
That's fine, thank you.
-the city engineer questions.
Okay. And then that final or second from final, number eight, that's, I'm gonna request that we table that and move it into our next committee meeting for Public Works. Okay, so item number four, report and recommendation, Clefstad Lift Station Rehabilitation, request for payment number two. I make a, a motion to, to honor pay request number two. It is a partial in the amount of $267,650.32 to January Construction Company. Is there a second?
Second.
And, and the, and the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition, motion carries. Next item is item number five, report and recommendation, 2008 Sidewalk Program Pay Request Number One. It is a partial payment. I make a motion that payment be made to G and M Cement Construction Incorporated in the amount of $27,591.52. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two oppositions, motion carries. Next item, item number six, and that is the 2008 Street Improvements Request for Payment Number Three. It is a partial payment. I make a motion to recommend that payment be made to Aero Road Construction Company in the amount of $699,263.78. Is there a, okay, there is a second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two oppositions, motion carries. Next item is item number seven, and we have payment number four, and it is a partial payment. I make a motion to recommend that payment be made to Aero Road Construction Company in the amount of $349,932.60. Is there a second? And the question? And the question?